Okay, so we're gonna get started. We may be joined by others. I'll admit them as appropriate and inquire about identification. So this is a meeting of the Casino Oversight Committee of this Council. Thank you for joining us tonight. It is 5:33 on Monday, January 24. We're joined today by my colleagues on the council, Councillor Govan, Councillor Whitfield, Councillor Hurst, Councillor Perez, and I believe that is all for right now. Also joined by City Solicitor Attorney Ed Bakula. Thank you Eddie for joining us and the MGM team. Admitting a couple of other individuals now. Before we get started.
Would you say it's fair to say that at any given time, there's at least 15 people, and I think that's a really well number in the casinos that gambles at least $30,000 a day?
Hello, hello, Mr. Conway. Yes, Mr. Conway, could you please?
There's not be people that gamble that much, I'm sure. This should be a volume of people that come in from around the
Yeah, that's what I said. Yeah, that's what I said. Did they look like anybody that $30,000 a day?
Okay. So before we get started, Mr. Matthew Conway, if I could have your attention, please. I just had to mute you in the room. Would you mind identifying yourself so that we can understand who you are and participating in this meeting? And if you could, please do us the favor of muting yourself thereafter so that we can't hear the conversations that you don't intend for us to have in this committee meeting. So, Mr. Conway, can you please identify yourself?
Hi, I'm a writer with Reminder Publishing.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. So before we get started, it looks like I've identified all the other colleagues who have joined. We've got some members of the press and the MGM team present. So MGM representatives, if you wouldn't mind by starting identifying yourselves and including those who are present on the video log and then also on the participating by phone. And then thereafter, I'll call the first agenda item and we'll start the meeting.
Do you'd like us to start off, Councillor Fenton?
Yes, please, Mr.
Do you need introductions? Great. Thank you. Thank you for attending this meeting. Thank you to the council. Thank you for Councillor Fenton. It's been quite some time since we've had one of these and we look forward to it. We have a fairly large group in the room with us here today. Myself and my colleague Frank Michel, who are to the council, as well as Dennis Murphy, who I believe all of you know. From the MGM team, we have President and Chief Operating Officer Chris Kelly, Gus Kim, who is Vice President of Legal Counsel, Beth Ward, who is, I'm not gonna announce our titles because I'm not sure exactly what they are, but Beth heads up the Community Affairs here locally for MGM Springfield, Amanda Gagnon, who heads up Entertainment for MGM Springfield, and Sean Dolan, who is charged with overseeing the daily operations of the Mass Mutual Center or MGM. So we have a few folks as well on the phone, but we've assembled a team here that should be able to address all items in the presentation and answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. One final person who just admitted to the room, Tim's iPhone. If you could please identify yourself.
Tim Allen.
Thank you, Councillor Allen. Okay, so we have one agenda item on for tonight. It's an update from MGM Springfield. I wanna thank everybody and all the stakeholders for being present today. I've had the opportunity over the course of quite a few years now to chair this committee and to work closely with some of the members of the MGM group who are here. I wanna thank you guys for coming forward and making this presentation and also specifically for answering my questions as they've come up over the course of the last few weeks and months and days leading to this presentation that I thought was important to brief the full council. So I'm glad we have a healthy complement of my colleagues here to hear this presentation and field questions. And with that, I would turn it over to MGM. If you'd like to make your presentation, I can give you screen sharing ability and we can entertain questions as they come. So Mr. Stratton, go ahead.
Thank you. And thank you again, everyone from the council, for taking the opportunity to be with us here this evening. Thank you to Councillor Fenton for coordinating this meeting. This subcommittee of the council was set up with good foresight to have a regular dialogue with city stakeholders about this transformative project in Springfield. I've had the good fortune of participating in several of these meetings over the years. We haven't had one in several months, partially because I think all of us, both on the city side and MGM side, have had our heads down dealing with the unprecedented COVID situation. But we thought, as we were, we collectively thought in discussions with Councillor Fenton, that going into a new year, hopefully seeing our way out of COVID into a new norm and welcoming some new members of the council, it was an opportune time to reengage in this dialogue and provide an update to the council on where MGM Springfield's been, where it is now, and where it's going moving forward. So we'll do that here today. I've already gone over the introductions. Before I turn it over to Chris Kelly to lead the presentation, I just wanna cover the topics that we'll address. Chris will go over, and I think this is a very interesting and informative piece, the COVID impact timeline and milestones that we've experienced. Provides some good context. We'll then cover the city payments. We'll do a review of employment numbers, our community outreach, some of the special events during the past several months and moving forward. And excitingly, the return of entertainment to downtown Springfield, and then we'll talk about next steps. To the extent that this is meant to be a dialogue, to the extent that you have any questions as we cover each of these areas, I would encourage any of you to interject and ask those, and the team assembled here will be, do their best to answer them informatively. So without further ado, I will turn it over to Chris Kelly, the President of MGM Springfield, to kick off the impact timeline and milestones.
Well, thank you, Seth. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Councillor Fenton. Thank you to the entire council for your leadership, past, present, and future. And thank you for our time together this evening during this truly extraordinary chapter. We're gonna spend a few minutes on this timeline. But before we do, for those that I've not yet had a chance to meet, I spent the first few decades of my life in and around this area. I grew up around here. And then I left for about 20 years. And so the opportunity to come back and be a part of this project, it was something that I followed from the very beginning, was in many respects a dream come true. My parents still live about 45 minutes away, aunts, uncles, brother, et cetera. And so shortly after I became a part of the team here, at the very beginning of 2020, of course, we had the opportunity, the unfortunate opportunity, to be the first team to ever close MGM Springfield. And so now the joke in the family is that you should never invite Chris to a party unless you wanted him to politely ask everyone to leave and lock all the doors in your house. And unfortunately, that is the situation that we found ourselves in on March 14 of 2020. We'll take a look at each stop along the way. You'll see there are some red, yellow, and green marks on this page, really just designed to indicate the stops and starts that we have experienced collectively, not just as a property, not just as an industry, but as a community throughout this COVID set of pages in the book that has been written. First, we closed the property down in March. We were closed for almost four months to the day, and we had an opportunity to reopen. It was something we were extraordinarily excited about in the middle of July 2020. But at that time, if we look back, it was a very different property opening versus the one that we saw in August of 2018. We were allowed to open at about 25% occupancy. That meant that with the distancing requirements, we could only open initially about 600 slot machines. And for those that recall, this property opened with about 2,500. We had to cut our table inventory nearly in half, and the property had six-foot-high sheets of Plexiglas across the entire floor and table games areas. We're not allowed to open the bars at that time. Obviously, the Regal Theaters were closed. Entertainment was not a possibility, and our restaurants were cut down to a fraction of what they would normally be. That really began a process of reinventing the slot and table games floor, a process that continues to this day. What we started doing is looking for parts of the building that we could move slot machines into so that we could give our guests the opportunity to play more of what they were looking for, obviously used to a floor that was 2,500-strong, shrinking down to a floor of only 600. And so when I began in this industry, there's something called the Battleship Bank, which is those large rectangular banks that you've seen in casinos all across the country. And they're banks of about 12, 14, sometimes 16 slot machines strong, shaped like a rectangle. Obviously, the shape and the use of those slots was unfortunately no longer a possibility with the Plexi and distancing requirements in place. So we began changing the shape of the floor. And when you look at the floor today, you see games that are in tripod shapes. You see games that are in quad shapes. You saw for periods of time, we moved slots into poker, which we could not operate for a period of time. We moved slots into Commonwealth, which we could not operate, to give our guests the ability to access games with comfortable distancing. And interestingly, we have found, you know, and I'll fast forward just briefly, we have found that that is a design that our guests truly enjoy. And you think about changes that COVID has brought on that will likely be sustained, that is one that I think falls into that category. We actually operate the casino floor with fewer slots than we ever have in our history. We're operating with fewer than 1,600 slots today. That's versus 2,500 when we opened, but with a very different shape and configuration of those games on the floor, allowing for maximum distancing and guests that truly prefer that. We've also taken our slot pits that were scattered around the property, in some cases densely surrounded by slots. We've moved those together, allowed for a little more breathing distance between the games. We've gone from about 90 to 50. So proportionately, the relationship between slots and tables is very much the same, but the look and the feel on the floor is 100% different than it was before March of 2020. I'll use that just as a precursor to some of the more specific changes that we've made along the way. When you think about closure, it's immediate and finite, but when we think about reopening, this is a process that we have progressively been moving towards now for the better part of two years. One of the first that you don't see on this slide was actually the reopening of Chandler in October of 2020 as our flagship fine dining entity that opened in the fourth quarter of 2020. Unfortunately, it was quickly followed by the need to move into a curfew. So the property began closing at 9:30 every night. I'd never had a New Year's Eve at home, but I did have one on New Year's Eve in 2020 because the property shut down at 12:31 at 9:30 in the evening. Fortunately, in January of 2021, that curfew was lifted, and we began to see still a heavily restricted environment, but we began to start to see some of those restrictions ease. In April, Wahlburgers actually opened. Opened first to a limited audience, opened to the public in May of that year. Many would remember, we had a line of people out the door down Main Street. When you think about some of the filters through which we've made decisions during this time, really been four of them that have driven the majority of the decisions we've made and when we've made them. The first is the restrictive environment. For example, when we had the curfew in place, we were really unable to open the hotel at that time. The second has been, you know, what are guests interested in at the moment? Where is the demand? What are they comfortable with? What are they asking for? In March of 21, we reopened TAP. We opened on a limited basis the hotel as well, certain days and times. Staffing has also been a filter through which we have driven a lot of our decision-making. And then lastly, of course, the city redevelopment effort. How can we help and continue to help play a part in the catalyst for growth downtown? I think Wahlburgers is probably the best example of that in April and then in May to the general public. Also in May, we started free outdoor concerts. This was really the reintroduction of entertainment at the property. We did that outside because it was, of course, the safest environment, health and safety being our North Star throughout this process. But we also did it for free because we knew that there was never more than now, never more than that moment, the need for our community to come together again, to begin to heal through music. And we're able to celebrate many of our local artists, and that's a strategy and a process you'll hear a little more about, but it's something we're very much leaning into as we move from '21 to '22 and beyond. We also saw Regal Cinemas reopen in May of that year. In August, our third birthday, in what an eventful three years it has been, we opened a brand-new sports lounge. We'll talk a little bit more about this, but this was obviously done, this investment, a significant investment, was done with an eye towards the future and the ability for the property to maintain its competitive edge against the state of Connecticut, which obviously has moved forward with sports betting legislation. The state of New York, which also just moved forward with mobile sports betting in the last few weeks. We also saw Roar Comedy Club reopen. We've got some exciting acts coming up for that, which Amanda will talk to a little bit later on in the presentation. In September, you heard me mention that we had moved slot machines throughout the property in an effort to grow that number from 600 to one that could meet the needs of our community. Well, by September, we had seen relaxed requirements enough that we could bring Commonwealth back in its more preferred outcome, which is an amazing music lounge that's now open four nights a week, live music four nights a week, and DJ acts as well. We saw the reopening of Knox in September at the same time. In October, moving forward into the fourth quarter, the first poker room in the state, I might add, the only poker room in the state reopened at the end of October to a line of folks that, believe it or not, began lining up shortly after midnight the morning that we were going to reopen. In November, a very proud moment to see the ice rink and the tree lighting return to the plaza. I'd been there the year before for what was a, unfortunately, ceremony that was very, very different than the one that we were able to bring forward in November of 21. In December, now we're talking about just in the last 30 days or so, the hotel reopened all seven days, all times. That hotel entrance, of course, is open all seven days as well along with it. And then in January, to bring us up to the current date, we know that we, again, as a city, experienced an indoor mask mandate. And so at the highest of levels, that has been a two-year journey from the perspective of the property, some of the key decisions that we've made together along the way, some of the ways that we've looked to engage with the community as well. We'll go into greater detail in many of these, but this provides some context for some of the conversation we'll have beyond that. Just one point that I'll make relative to Slide 6. And that is around our obligation for payments to the city of Springfield. At no point, despite the fact that the property was closed for four months, did those payments stop. We're very proud of the fact that we met our commitments relative to the city of Springfield, and just look at how that number has grown. 83 million now through the year 2021, and growing. We'll move from here into our employment review, and I'll hand it over to Seth. Didn't mention Beth's title. I will bring it up because Beth was recently promoted as well to the Director of Community Affairs. So I'm very proud. They hand it over to Beth Ward.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you, everybody. Great to be with you this evening. What you see on your screen there is a lot of numbers, but we want you to, some of the biggest takeaways. We went from 2,000, around 2,000 team members, went into COVID. During the pandemic, we went well below half of that due to the circumstances we were dealing with. Today, we are just over 1,200 team members with over 200 open positions at this time, positions that have been available for some time. We are working incredibly hard to fill those. We'll talk more on that coming up. So if anybody knows, anybody that's looking for a position, let me know. Let's break it down even further on the next slide as we look into what we've been doing. Despite so many challenges that have been presented by COVID, we have been doing a great job in trying to reach out to the community, and you'll look at some of these numbers here. We've exceeded our hiring goals in three out of four categories. We stand at 51% minority team members. 6% of our employees are veterans. That's over 2% of the goal. 37% are Springfield residents. I skipped over women team members for a reason. While we are just slightly below our target of 50%, I would like to point out that we have plans to increase those numbers, and we are working very hard to do so. For example, Gus Kim and I are working with Bay Harbor University to collaborate. We're meeting with them next week for some workforce development issues. Also working with Nancy Creed over at The Chamber, talking with her recently, and again, we're meeting with her next week to combine try to get some workforce development going in that respect, some great community partners that we have to that end. Would like to also point out that our high percentage of women currently within MGM, we are very proud of our promotion rate from within, particularly in women. Chris mentioned that I recently received a promotion. Thank you very much, Chris. Appreciate that. Amanda Gagnon, who has been here since before day one, recently promoted as well, Springfield resident. So, you know, joining this team, I've been here almost seven months. That was something that is very important to me, and I've lived it, and I'm very proud to be a part of that happening here on property. Let's look at two of the bullet points that are on the bottom of the slide. It's worth repeating that we now have more than 1,200 employees, 200 open positions, more than that. 40% of those openings are included in beverage positions open on average for three months. Again, if you know anybody interested, send them our way. We all know that it is a highly competitive job market that we're in, so let's go to the next slide if we could. What are we doing to attract new team members? I would argue that MGM Springfield has one of the most competitive incentive packages in the region. That includes up to a $2,500 sign-on retention bonus. And that is something that we, again, are very proud to offer. Includes also tuition reimbursement. We have partnerships with various colleges and universities. Again, that is something that many of our team members have taken advantage of, and we hope that that is also attracting new team members to MGM. I will also tell you that our health insurance package at MGM, by far, I have to say, it is the best that I've had in my professional life. So very proud about that as well. I would also like to mention that our average, that our average salary is about $59,000 and $59,000 per year, and we are also incredibly proud of that. That is total compensation for MGM team members. Census data puts in the city of Springfield around 21,000, so we are well above that. Workforce initiatives, moving on to the next slide. Working hard to return amenities, as you've heard about, and you'll hear about further coming up. Also, hiring events. We have had on-property hiring events. We've had to move those to virtual. But again, working with community partners, mass hire, virtual career events, HCC culinary school training. We are working with them, as a matter of fact. In early November, we helped them to get REDA accreditation for the American Culinary Foundation, and we have hired so many of their graduates, and we continue to work on that relationship very actively to get some of those graduates here to MGM Springfield. We have a longstanding relationship with them, and we are excited to see what the future brings. So these are just some of the things that we are working on here at MGM Springfield. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Chris.
Chris, before you continue, I just wanna recognize we're also joined by our colleague, Councillor Victor Dobyla. Thank you for joining us, Councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, councillors. Well, you know, one of the reasons I joined MGM, why it was so important to me to be a part of this team, is this next few slides. This company is extraordinarily committed to engaging within the communities that we live and work in this property is absolutely a reflection of that as well. Yeah, during COVID, obviously, the challenges attached to how we do that were driven by a variety of different factors, but at no point along the way did we ever stop that process of outreach, engagement, and support. And so this next slide, among a few that we're going to speak to, I think are just emblematic of that commitment. We can see this particular set of donations just a few months ago to the Boys and Girls Club, Dress for Success, linked to libraries and the YWCA of Western Massachusetts. If we look back over just the last few years, and again, an amazing journey over the last three years or so, we have contributed over 350,000 in charitable donations to the local community just since opening. But it doesn't really stop there. If we go to the next one, now some, after having seen my carpentry skills, might wish it stopped there. But we're also heavily engaged with community partners like Habitat for Humanity. This is a project that we've worked on on Bay Street. This should actually be done in just a few months. It's a mom, a Springfield mom, and her two children. We're going to go back again to welcome them to their home. And so you can see this is a process of engagement across our entire workforce, however small or big along the way. It's one of the reasons why folks enjoy being a part of the property, and it's one of the ways that we engage and celebrate our community at the same time. This, again, these pictures, unfortunately, apparently I don't know how to operate a hand truck either, but the spirit was definitely there, and the generosity of not just our team members, but our guests and our community. I'm not telling anybody on this call anything you don't already know, but you know, challenges have a way of defining, but they also have a way of uniting. Watching the outpouring of generous support just this last holiday season was truly inspiring. And so you see a reflection of that. Our facilities team actually built the gingerbread house that we had in the front of the property throughout the season, allowing guests to come in and support the cause. If we move into the next slide, we've also been busy from an event standpoint. You know, the best thing about the picture in the upper left-hand corner is we have an extraordinary sports lounge that hopefully one day becomes an even more extraordinary sports betting area. But the fact that there are no one in those seats, I think, speaks to the fundamental challenge of our ability to offer that. That being said, this weekend, a great place to watch the games. We have a 45-foot viewing wall. Every pixel in that wall can be programmed individually. It is an amazing place to watch the game, and obviously, we've got a bar right behind it. This is right adjacent to the state and main entrance. We also built a VIP viewing area that you see in the lower left-hand corner in TAP, and this is just behind or in front of the bowling alleys, an amazing space. We had folks during the Hall of Fame Weekend, Hall of Fame in Trimen across the street at Mass Mutual. We had a tremendous amount of demand for that space. It's a great spot to have a party or watch a game. And then lastly, you heard me mention a bit earlier, our celebration of the return of poker. As someone who loves playing poker myself, an extremely gratifying moment to be the first in the state. We are still the first in the state and have seen a very, very positive response from our guests to the reintroduction of poker to MGM Springfield. And from there, I will hand it to our before-day-wanter. Someone who is an extraordinary part of the team, an amazing leader, Amanda Gagnon.
Thank you. Thank you for having me today, and thank you for your service to this community. As Beth mentioned, I'm also a Springfield resident, so I appreciate your continued commitment to this project. So let's talk entertainment. As Chris mentioned, we brought back free concerts to the plaza this past summer. It was a big milestone for many reasons, but it was thrilling to be able to bring live, local but it was thrilling to be able to bring live, local entertainment back to our gorgeous property and bring the lively community back out in a safe manner to our plaza. It was for many people, I think, the first time that they were able to experience an event like that in so much time. So it was really an incredible experience. And we were also able to partner with White Lion Brewery, who Springfield's on, obviously, who were able to bring their brew truck out to the plaza for all of their shows. That's just one example of the kind of partnership that we're looking to expand on this summer as we bring the series back. More local bands, local vendors, local artists. And we're excited to see that return to property. Also, last summer, we saw the return of our Roar Comedy Club. We've been programming that since August. Even just this past weekend, we had Vicki Barbalak of America's Got Talent fame. And in a couple weeks, we'll be seeing SNL veteran Tim Meadows there as well. So maybe we'll see you there for that. We've also started programming our Aria Ballroom once again. We saw great crowds for New Year's Eve with Broadway's Rock of Ages Band. And then in March, we'll be bringing in the best Queen tribute, in my opinion, and I think many others, Killer Queen, to our Aria Ballroom in March. If you want to head on to the next slide. So I wanted to take some time to look back on, you know, what we've done in the past couple of years and also what we have coming down the pipe as well. So in 2019 is when we assumed responsibilities of managing Symphony Hall. As you can see, we kicked it off with a star-studded lineup that first year, including legendary names like Smokey Robins and Steve Martin, Martin Short, just to name a few. And it was really incredible to be able to come in with that kind of star power so early on into our relationship with the Hall. Moving on to the next slide. You'll notice there isn't a 2020 slide for obvious reasons. Due to the COVID shutdown, we were unable to program the theater in 2020. But our booking team was hard at work in the background. And due to the impactful investment that the city made in that theater, we were able to bring in four major acts just at the end of last year. They're showcased here. Chicago being one of them. I know Gus had a great time at Chicago.
That's kind of an inside joke here. I grew up in the 70s and 80s, and Chicago is one of my favorite bands. I never had the pleasure to see them in concert until October 6th, when I had the fortune to see them at Symphony Hall. What a great venue for a concert. And it was a transformative experience for me. I expanded at length on an MGC presentation as well. It's become kind of an inside joke. Every time Chicago is mentioned, everybody looks at me.
I'll sing for you, too, if you'd like.
Yeah, the karaoke happens after. And then moving on to the next slide. We are already ramping up for this year. Currently, we have these six shows announced on sale for Symphony Hall, including major names like Jay Leno and Chelsea Handler. We have the nearly sold-out show with Tom Segura. And we're going to be bringing back Boys to Men. This will be their third time at Symphony Hall since MGM came to town. They love playing there. People love seeing them, and we'll keep bringing them back as long as that rings true. And our team is constantly working on new leads, new tours to be programming at Symphony Hall and throughout the city. And we're looking forward to a robust calendar for the rest of the year. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sean for what's going on over at Mass Mutual Center.
Thanks, Amanda. So like Amanda, I'm going to take us back to 2018, 2019, 2020, just sort of touch on the fact that since MGM Springfield opened in August of 2018, we've continued to see MGM bring top-tier talent to the Mass Mutual Center. I won't go through them individually, but just to start, obviously, we kicked it off with a sold-out opening concert with Stevie Wonder in 2018. Then through a partnership with the Thunderbirds, which I'll touch on a little bit on the next slide, we were able to host the AHL All-Star Classic for the first time since, the first time ever. And that was in January. So two nights there with skills competition and then the game. And then jumping ahead to Aerosmith. We hold, he's sold out four shows in August of 2019, which not only is that incredible, but in addition to that, that put us at number six in the Billboard rankings for top venues of our capacity. And that's the first time the building's ever been in that ranking. Then we moved on to Slayer, and we saw Slayer sell the venue out as well. And a special concert for us because it was the final leg of their farewell tour. So they only played about 15 shows as a band after the one we did. So we got to see them on the tail end of their career. And then looking at MGM's partnership with the Red Sox. We also had a very successful Red Sox weekend event in January of 2020. And then important to note, it's not captured all these slides, but many of our events are also made possible because of our relationship with the corporate booking team. So although they might not be direct MGM events, acts such as Bill Burr, Dropkick Murphy's, many of the other events we've seen, program both the arena and convention center over the past few years, have been through the collaboration with our MGM corporate booking team and what we're able to work in tandem with them to bring to the area. So I want to highlight that as well. And then as we look at sort of our return post-COVID and how we moved out of COVID, and as we look into 2022, another example of what I just touched on of working with our corporate booking team. So we were able to have CES, MMA, and boxing in the building, which we brought in for the first time in the building's history in 2021. And we actually saw them three times in the span of 2021 and look to continue to grow that partnership. Same thing with PBR. We hadn't seen them in the building since 2013 and worked with MGM Corporate to get them in the building in August. Of course, the entire city department together to bring back the Neesmith Memorial Basketball Hall of Fame Enshrinement in September of 2021 and see that come back to Springfield. And then, of course, as we move to 2022, we just announced this morning, actually, we went on sale with Ken, or on Friday, we'll go on sale with Ken and Babyface. We have also already gone on sale with John Mulaney in June. That is a very big show for us, arguably the most popular touring comedian today. And then, of course, probably most important to note on the slide, MGM was obviously instrumental in keeping hockey in Springfield and remains the Springfield Thunderbirds presenting sponsor. And to that effect, in September of 2021, we actually executed a new lease agreement with the Thunderbirds. So we could not be more excited for that partnership, both with the team, the Off-ice team, and then kind of more importantly, using this platform. Also, want to just point out that the team's performance this year specifically has been truly incredible. We're looking forward to a potential playoff run there. And, you know, because of that, we've seen several sellouts this year and continue to see those sales trend extremely positively, even with all the challenges that COVID presents.
Well, thank you, Sean. For those that don't know, Sean is not only an amazing leader, he's been with the property since before MGM Springfield opened, but he was also a standout hockey player. So Thunderbirds need anybody to walk on. We've got Sean ready to take the ice. Want to talk a little bit about the opening that Seth gave. So he mentioned that really the purpose of today was to talk a little bit about where we've been, where we are, and where we are going. And this slide is really focused on where we are going. We've been able to, over the last few years, I think, as a collective community, focus on what's critical about getting out of this, you know, just extraordinary experience that we have all lived. And the focus today, I think, is one that does have a fair amount of optimism attached to it. I think we've also learned that looking out too far in front of our skis is very challenging in a COVID world. And so wanted to talk about our commitments for the next 90 days. Wanted to offer what we think would be a really helpful dialogue to have together on an ongoing basis every quarter around key things that are changing at the property, things that we are activating, things that are happening. There's always a tremendous amount happening at a property like MGM Springfield. But specifically, wanted to talk about what we can expect to see over the next three months. Now, obviously, we have the challenge of any restrictions that might come into place. Let's assume that doesn't happen. Staffing is probably the most acute challenge that the property faces today. Beth mentioned we have over 200 openings as we sit here now. But that being said, we think we have a pretty exciting action item list for the next 90 days or so. I'd like to go through each one of them briefly. The first is family access to South End Market. I think most know South End Market, our food court. And when the property shut down and we reopened, we reopened with a singular entrance. Only the valet entrance was open. There was only one way to get into the property. We had screening protocols attached to bring guests in line into the property. At that point, we really didn't have the ability to offer South End Market to our guests that are under 21 years old. And so families and children, then of which go to Thunderbirds games every week, have been unable to access South End Market. That's about to change. And so in the next few months, you will see South End Market open up to families, open up to children, open up again, consistent with what you would have seen prior to March of 2020. Additionally, you will see Top Golf reopening for reservation bookings initially. Hopefully, we grow beyond that in the next 90 days. You will see Costa Pizza Counter and Bar reopening on Fridays and Saturdays. It's been a long time since we've seen Costa engaged, getting the pizzas going again, getting that bar open again. It's one of the most beautiful parts of the property, I think. You will see that reopening on Fridays and Saturdays. Tap Bowling, you will see reopening Friday through Sunday. You'll see a new concept in South End Market. We've been working with a local partner. His name's Jose Diaz. He operates Macho Taco in Agawam. We've actually built this space out, and we'll be opening it in the next 90 days, initially Friday through Sunday. And then this last bullet point really speaks to, I think, an ongoing effort regarding how do we reengage the plaza? How do we continue to move in the direction of that inside-out activation? As we sit here today, the valet doors are open every day. The plaza doors are open every day. Hotel doors open every day. State and Main open for every special event, but we're not done yet. And as we look at retail opportunities in the plaza, as we look for ways to more fully engage the armory, as we look for opportunities to grow that community connection, having these conversations, not just internally, which you see represented here, but also together as a group, is something that we are very committed to and wanted to make sure that that was a topic that we continue to raise, not just today, but in every conversation going forward. And so deeply appreciate the opportunity to speak together tonight. Want to say thank you again for your collective leadership during an extraordinary time. Thank you for everything that you've done, not just for this project, but also for our community. And with that, Counselor Fenton will stop there.
Counselor Fenton, if I could make just one closing remark. As many of you, as you know, and many of you know, I've been working with the MGM Springfield team for a number of years in a variety of capacities. I can honestly say this presentation this evening, and I've seen a lot of them, was one of the best, one of the most substantive, and one of the most informative presentations that I've seen talking about what we've done and where we're going since I've been involved. I don't know what that says about me because I used to be doing these presentations to your committee and was never as good or informative as this was tonight. But I think it suggests that the team is taking this dialogue very seriously and recognizes that coming out of COVID, where there's a lot of questions about what a lot of businesses are doing, it's really important to have these types of dialogues on a move-forward basis. So thank you.
Thank you, Seth. And, you know, having the local team helps for sure. So appreciate your comments in that regard. And I think you did a fine job back then, and you've certainly got some worthy successors internally here. But so, if I may, I just want to make a few remarks, and then I'll turn it over to colleagues for questions or comments. I agree with Attorney Stratton. Very thorough and comprehensive presentation, so thank you to that. MGM and the team. I thought that this meeting was important for a variety of reasons, and I'm speaking really primarily to my colleagues here today. The local team that backed and proposed and advocated for this development, you see some of them here today. We've got Frank and Dennis and Seth. And there's a lot of other new committed partners who are the current face of MGM Springfield and in the advent of departures with people like Mike and Mr. Dixon and a variety of other stakeholders. I thought it was important that everybody have a chance specifically to see the seriousness with what the MGM Springfield team is treating this property and treating the exit from the COVID-19 pandemic, particularly here in Springfield. Additionally, I had some concerns that originally I addressed with them with respect to what 2022 would look like. And particularly because of some of the necessary impacts to the property in the COVID-19 pandemic. We saw this primarily in the entertainment space, in the outdoor space. Thankfully, we did not see it in the revenue space. And through discussions with MGM and Solicitor Pacula, MGM was agreeable to making the full payment, as you saw on one of the first slides, of their host community agreement obligations. And we're not talking about insignificant figures. So those payments were made despite the fact that there was a government-ordered shutdown of the property. And I think that it's worth acknowledging that and thanking the corporation for making those payments because they had a really strong argument against it, quite honestly, against making those payments at a time when they were forced to be closed. So in that environment, I've continued to monitor closely the comings and goings at the property and compliance with the HCA. And I think that everybody can or should agree that really the last year, 18 months, have been really tough. And there's a lot of obligations that they had that legally they couldn't honor in terms of performance of the property. And we've seen closures of some of the restaurants and things as every other business and industry has seen. So my concern was about the outlook for 2022. I started those conversations in earnest with the company in late 2021. And that has manifested itself with this comprehensive and, quite frankly, exciting presentation about what 2022 has in store. So with that said, that's sort of the context for this initial meeting. And I appreciate the presentation, the offer to me quarterly, and the working group suggestion. And with that, I will turn it over to any counselors who have questions or comments that they would like to make. If you'd like to raise your hands in the queue. Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say, great presentation. Thank you for meeting your revenue expenses to the city. We definitely appreciate that. I mean, your revenue commitment, I'm sorry. And we definitely appreciate that. I was so excited to see the entertainment list for 2022 because I seen Boys to Men, and all I could think of was "Into the Roll" because that was my last song. So I wanted to start singing it when I seen them. And so I'm just really happy to see. And I plan on attending that. And I'm really happy to see the entertainment that's coming. And I didn't even know that you offered that much entertainment. I don't know why I didn't know that, but I immediately went to your website, and I see some comedy shows and things that I definitely want to attend. So I thank you for still bringing entertainment to the area because at a time when it's so many negative things happening as far as COVID goes and the deaths and everything else, just that entertainment helps to lift the spirit. And I'm just very, very happy to see what you have coming in the future. I also used to work with HCC, and I actually solo trained in the culinary department. I worked for HCC and stick on the Tool Project. And you had the MC, that training that we did as a partnership. And it was a really great program. So I'm happy to see that you're still working with HCC because they have an outstanding culinary department. So really, I'm just here to give you kudos on all the things that you're doing to keep MGM alive and offer entertainment to the city of Springfield. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. MGM, would you mind turning off your screen share so that we can see the active speakers, please? Okay, so next we have Counselor Allen, followed by Counselor Gohan.
Yeah, thanks. Hi, Tim Allen here. Was pretty involved with the whole decision-making process on the casino and been on the council from long before the casino. So good job. I enjoyed working with you guys then. And this is an excellent presentation today. I'm curious. I appreciate as much as the concrete part of the presentation was really good, there's a good spirit about you guys. It's nice to hear about the shows and the revenue, et cetera. There's a good spirit about you and how you presented your stuff today. And I'm just wondering, I feel good about the presentation, but can you compare the challenges you've had here in Springfield, you know, at MGM Springfield with other MGM properties? Has there been something different here? Has it been harder here, more challenging to meet, to deal with COVID here? Or what's been unique about this that you're not experiencing at the other MGM properties as much?
Well, first, thank you for the kind words, Counselor. And I would answer the question two ways. First, there have been a lot of And I would I would answer the question two ways. First, there have been a lot of common threads, I would say, to to each of the properties around the country and and what we've experienced, you know, challenges with restrictions, challenges with closure, challenges with distancing, guest comfort levels and in coming back and how they've responded to that. So in that sense, we've had, you know, a high degree of commonality, most recently staffing, I think, is a challenge that we we are feeling across all of our properties around the United States. What I think has been, you know, unique about Springfield, which I would I would put in the category of of strength, the relationship that this property has with this state and the surrounding communities, I think, is very unique. And our ability to work together from, you know, everything from, you know, when it's a hot day and we know the city's putting together a shelter, a cooling station, and, you know, we have the ability to run over and bring bottles of water over to conversations like this. We have a degree of investment in this community that I think is unlike any property that I have worked at. And that is unique in the best possible way. And that's something that I hope never changes, whether we're going through a crisis like COVID or not. And I think those on the call, obviously, cherish medicine credit for that leadership and creating that culture. But that's really stood out for me in my time here. And again, something that I hope we we continue to grow.
Appreciate that, the feeling towards community here. You know, we're a big city, but we're a small city and it's a small, you know, Western masses. You know, forgotten in a lot of ways. You know, many of us feel that we don't get the attention in Massachusetts, Boston gets, et cetera. So treating this as special and with understanding the local flavor, et cetera. I mean, it went right, started right from the design of the of the casino, of the resort, right from the start, all the kind of his Springfield history, et cetera, that was honored and how that was done. And I appreciate if you can keep that going through the relationships. That's that's good stuff. Thank you.
Tim, if I could add one more comment, remembering back to when I was here, but talking with Chris about this recently. One of the keys to reopening successfully and doing a lot of what they've talked about is compliance with COVID protocols. And those were very important in our industry, were very important to our regulators. And the Western Mass and Springfield community, we were very nervous about when we rolled out mask compliance requirements and how they'd be received and and how we would get most to comply. I think it's a slightly different world now, even half later, but from the community here in the Springfield property, and I think in the Northeast generally, when this Springfield property was very strong with COVID compliance, which made our patrons, which made the ability to reopen successfully that much easier, perhaps compared to not necessarily other properties within the company, but industry-wide and other regions, that aspect of it was was very strong.
That's good. That's good to hear. Great. Thank you, Seth.
Counselor Govan.
Thank you so much, Counselor Fenton. I just want to thank the the group from MGM for the presentation. It was very concise, very detailed, and I appreciate that. And like Trace, Counselor Whitfield, I'm looking forward to the entertainment that's going to be happening coming forth. I know that you guys were able to keep your commitment to the city, which I really appreciate throughout this pandemic. And I think, I guess, with Counselor Fenton, we'll be having discussions about where that money went. That was my question. That's a separate meeting, I know. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jessica.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Govan. Seeing no other counselors, is there anybody else that has a comment, counselors? In the chat? Thank you, Solicitor Pacula, for your comment. All right, so I would just say I would just say in closing that, again, thank you to everybody and the stakeholders for attending. I think that 2022 will arguably be one of the most important years for the casino and its successful future in Springfield. And I think that this is definitely starting it off on the right foot. Look forward to setting up quarterly meetings, Chris, with you and your team. And if you'd like to make any closing remarks, I'd invite you to, and then we'll end the meeting.
Well, thank you again, Counselor Fenton. And again, thank you to the entire council, not just for the time today, but for your continued work on behalf of the city and our community. I also wanted to call out Eddie Pacula, who I know is on the call with us, and say thank you to him for all of his hard work over the years on behalf of the city. I would describe him as tough but fair, which is exactly what you want. He's been an extraordinarily positive impact. And for those that don't know, he's also a frequent guest to MGM Springfield, which makes me like him even more. So wanted to say thank you to him on behalf of MGM Resorts. And Eddie, we certainly look forward to welcoming you as a guest for many, many months and years to come. Thank you.
That's great. And I'd be remiss, Solicitor, if I didn't acknowledge the critical role that the solicitor played in the evaluation process of the different applications, the referendum preparation, the HCA negotiation, and twisting some arms to get the treatment that we got under the force majeure clause. So Solicitor, you know, I I know that we're not done here with your service to the city and hopefully that continues for many, many more moons to come. But, you know, put candidly, this agreement wouldn't exist in its form, and MGM Springfield wouldn't exist in its form if it wasn't for your efforts.
Thank you all for the kind words. I I really hope that 2022 is going to be the best year yet. This, it seems to me like you guys have done an excellent job weathering the storm. And I hope there will be a lot more cooperation. It looks like you've got a well-thought-out plan going forward. And while I may be retiring, I I hope to be here a little bit longer. And I I think that working with MGM has been one of the most exciting things that I've done throughout my career. So thank you all.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We'll be back in touch about the next meeting next quarter. Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you.